Wait for them. Okay, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th, 2020.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2020 bills that's presented by the county auditor.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2020 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2020 then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the journal entry. The Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize a full-time hire of Anthony Norman as third shift CBL truck driver in his new position previously held at the county in the range of Portage County Solid Waste Management District. And just need to start the age of April 6th, 2020. And permission to raise that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-enrollment test.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. Is there anything else? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Brandon.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
So we'll reconvene in the general session. And, uh, Joanne, we're ready for you. Joanne, we're ready for you. I was just gonna say, over there.
This kid?
Yes. Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Joanne.
All right, so we have the job posting out first?
Yes.
Um, and what I wanted to talk about was, of course, the job posting that I'm talking about is the, one for the maintenance worker that we want to replace, okay? Um, and I'm nothing, we didn't decide to move forward with the posting at the last meeting based on the conversation we needed to have with the other employee. Well, I'm having a very difficult time getting ahold of that employee. The number that I have, I've left a message every single day since. And then finally yesterday afternoon, oh, I have a different number now, and I got your letter that I sent certified then. So that was received, and the call that we're going to place is going to happen on Monday. But I said to Janet, is there anything that we can do to speed up the posting kind of thing? And she said that in the past, you guys had done one similar for Bill Steiner when they were waiting on some paperwork for one of his mechanics that we're leaving in. So she said if the board would be inclined to do that today, then we could get it started for our maintenance person. Because I think right now, my biggest fear is that I still have, all of our cleaners and our maintenance guys are all still working. And I haven't been able to say, you know, you guys come in this day, and then the next crew come in this day because we're still kind of trying to keep everything sanitized. Now, with the limiting of people in the building here, I think that's gonna change a little bit, hopefully, that, but the sanitizing still has to happen, and we still have to change filters, we still have to maintain. So, um, the extra body would help, I think.
Say no more, we can go ahead and authorize the job posting.
Okay, and there's a, she gave me also a journal entry that said if you would pass the journal entry, this would be an extra for today.
So I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize the internal posting of the full-time maintenance worker too due to the operational needs for Portage County Internal Services.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
All right. Um, then, I got an email from Nopec about the sponsorship program. Last year, you gave money, the sponsorship money to-
Celebrate Portage.
Celebrate Portage and something with the airport. You split them up. Well, the note says that we, that the decision has to be made by March 31st this year.
Oh, my.
And I thought, whoa, hello. So I don't know if you guys have any idea what you want to do this year. It's the same amount of money, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars.
I'd still be inclined to do the Celebrate Portage. I know last year, it was recommended either donating towards the new building at the fair and/or Celebrate Portage. And I know Nopec was more in favor of the Celebrate Portage because it does encumber the entire county.
Well, yeah, Charlie came back, Charlie Grimmer from Nopec came back and said that he didn't feel that, even though it's a Portage County Fair, he didn't feel that that was the appropriate one. So he was recommending that you do that.
And just for the record, that airport event, it is in collaboration, it's part of that Celebrate Portage.
And you just, all you did was you separated, you divided the money and sent part of it to the airport guy that takes care of their finances, and then Todd Pete's got the other.
Yeah, because they have like four or five different events. And we could just allocate it all to Celebrate Portage, or if we went to airmark which events, we could do that again.
I think that's fine.
Pardon me?
I think it's fine to do.
Okay, so I will, I'll log in with Nopec and put that in for us so that we don't lose our money.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanne.
Um, before we move on to the resolutions, I want to talk a minute just about some issues that obviously are propping up with trying to find protective equipment for our EMA. I'm working with Ryan all the time with vendors trying to get stuff in. We have the ability to buy thirty, thirty thousand, um, thirty thousand paper masks. Not the N95 ones, but the ones, and that, um, he found out just a few minutes ago that UH would be very happy to be able to get. While the cost of these will be just, it's like twenty-five thousand dollars for the amount of cases. He's going to check with UH to see if they would pay the bill. But he and I, I mean, I want the approval from you folks, I think, if you will, to be able to go ahead and get this kind of stuff when we can get it. Sometimes if it's on Amazon or things like that, you have to act fast or it's gone. He was, he's concerned about twenty-five thousand dollars, and you know, and I, and that's no small chunk change by any means. But I think I'd like to have some kind of ceiling approval, or if you want me to call one of you or call two of you to say, you know, what, what do you feel is a legitimate rate that we can go to just to handle it? And then do you want to be informed? We can email, or do you want me to call and say, is it okay to move forward?
Joanne, is that, is that part of that correction that he gave us, two twenty-five thousand dollars for EMA? Is that?
That was, that was, no, because he, we just got this pricing from him this morning, yeah. And that's what, and that's why he's saying that UH, what, they would take all of these. And he's calling them to say, well, will you pay the bill? And then obviously, that invoice would go right to them, not really be, we wouldn't have to pay it. But it is my vendor that's going to be in the midst, kind of middle of it all. And I just want to make sure that we've got them protected too. So I, I kind of wanted to feel you out to say, what are your feelings on what we want to do?
Is it typical that the EMA purchases emergency supplies and then sends them out to?
Yes, because I, when I talked to him this morning, when he called, I said, well, are these for Portage County? Or are these like for the whole state kind of thing? And he said, no, Portage. Portage comes first, is our, and he said, so then when he was on his call this morning, UH was, you've got somebody that can get those, we would be interested in having all, so.
Okay, Joanne, if UH doesn't pay for them, would that go on the list for payment to reimburse or not?
Well, that's what I, I also said that to Ryan, I go, is this reimbursable? And he was reading down the text, and it said materials and supplies.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in the long scheme of things, I guess, my, my concern is, is that no matter where we use them here in Portage County, if it helps prevent spreading, we're doing our part as best as we can with tax dollars. So.
And I think it's part of the disaster plan for us to be able to do that. And I think it also, it's also covered, I mean, I know it doesn't give a specific amount, but you know, we authorized the directors and staff to be able to make decisions regarding the health, safety, and welfare for, you know, the employees in the county. And then all we ask is that at our next session, you know, or just want to shoot us an email and say, hey, just want to let you know, we need to purchase blah, blah, blah.
So if you're okay with that, we'll move forward when we can get whatever we can get. And then at your next board meeting, you can ratify, I can set up a journal entry listing what we've done, and then that way you'll know. Is that good enough?
Yeah, because we don't want to miss out on an opportunity to get those.
That's right, that's why I said, I mean, you know, every time I turn around.
But I would check with UH first, and then.
Oh, sure. Well, I would imagine, you know, that they would.
Just to get it posted, even if UH does it, just to know.
All right, that was the only extra thing that.
Thank you.
So in, um, on my resolutions, the very first one that I have is for inspection services, additional inspection services that the county engineer wants to do on the Townage Road widening Maple Crest project. They had, we had a contract with them already established, and now there's a need to have more thorough inspections done. And this is to take care of that extra.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners accepts the contract modification to the engineering agreement with Brandon Pedersen, Inc. in Portage County for providing professional construction administration inspection services for Project Ninety Townage Road Widening Maple Crest Base, Loyal Prudence, and Brumhill Township, Portage County. We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
The next resolution is the results of bid that we put out for the county engineer and is recommending the amounts that we're going to purchase and the vendors that we're going to purchase them from. So it's a recommendation of acceptance.
The Board of Commissioners, I make a motion, the Board of Commissioners accepts the bids for furnishing various sizes of slate for use of the Portage County Engineer.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Number three is the same because we bid them all together. This is for gravel this time.
I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners accepts bids for furnishing various sizes of gravel for use by the Portage County Engineer.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
The next one is for limestone that he uses throughout our county.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners accepts the bids for furnishing various sizes of limestone for use by the Portage County Engineer.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Uh, number five is for yellow and white traffic paint that we purchased.
I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners accepts the bid of Australian Company for furnishing acrylic water-based traffic safety tape for use by the Portage County Engineer.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
The next resolution is in concert with the septic assistance program that was established out of the Stormwater Fund. There's a residence in Lovettor that could utilize and that we want to be able to replace their septic and pay towards that with Silver Star Excavating. They would be doing the work at this location in Lovettor.
I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into Septic Assistance Program agreement with Regional Planning Commission, Silver Star Excavating, and Landscaping LLC for septic system replacement.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Um, and then this amendment with Environmental Design Group is a slight increase of, I think, about eighty-five dollars. Uh, this is the Head Start, Rubena Head Start project with CBPG funds. And the extra expense was due to printing, additional printing of plans and things that they had to do. So it's a modification to the existing contract.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into amendment number two with Environmental Design Group.
Number one is about, is number one, is that what you have to?
I'm sorry, what?
Enter into amendment number one or two. Oh, did I say one? You said two. Mine says one, I don't know which is correct.
Um.
Oh.
I know it says two, there are.
It says one, and if you think the other says two, it's one.
Okay. I'll amend the motion, the Board of Commissioners, it is enter into amendment number one.
I think that was probably just a typo on the actual schedule here, not in this, the resolution is correct.
All second.
Can you second that?
Yes.
All second, and we'll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. All right.
Hi, Sue.
Morning, everybody. I just have two resolutions today. Um, I don't know which one's first, I'm gonna give the agenda this time. So the transfer of twenty thousand eight sixty five twenty eight. So this is just our normal monthly shared cost transfer for child support to pay back public assistance for shared costs that are paid originally out of public assistance. So for the month of February, twenty thousand eight sixty five twenty eights.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty five dollars and twenty eight cents from fourteen fourteen Child Support Administration to fund fourteen ten Public Assistance Fund.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
And then number two is also a shared funds transfer from our Child Welfare Levy Fund in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is our fourth payment on our first quarter state fiscal year 2020 amount that's owed back to public assistance.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer a hundred and sixty thousand from Fund fourteen fifteen Child Welfare Special Levy Fund to fourteen ten Public Assistance Fund.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello?
Hey, Todd. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Okay, you're on, Todd.
Amy, why don't you explain what's going on?
Hey, Todd, um, we're ready to go over your items. The first one, the job of high loan payment deferral.
Uh, that's what my grandmother would like the ability to defer payment and interest deferral on all the other loans that they do. They work with JFF to do that deferral. They'd like permission to do deferral on the left of the line.
So is the email that we just got different from the, no, I think it's a motion perhaps. What is this? Do we have an email, Todd, from Julia Battles that you forwarded? Is that backup to the journal entry that you emailed on at nine eleven this morning? Amy.
Yeah, that, if you pass that journal entry, then it will apply to all the other loans as well.
So you're talking about all the, like, the revolving loans, all the different loan types we have with NDS?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
How much money are we talking about, Todd?
Well, at the end of the day, you're not talking a loss of any money, you're just talking waiting six months on everything. If they don't make the payment, their payment cycle will just be setback. You're still gonna accrue essentially the same interest, which is you're deferring it for six months. In reality, in terms of time benefit, you know, six-month deferral on interest on most of these loans is minimal. And you're talking maybe a hundred dollars over the lifetime of the loan.
Do you know how many loans we have out, Todd?
Well, you have considerable amounts of loans, but a lot of them don't require payment.
Okay.
The old loans wouldn't be effective at all. You only have a handful that actually require monthly payment.
Yeah. So is, is your opinion that, that we would be fine to go ahead and do this? Because I'm, I'm leaning in favor of it, so.
Yeah, but like I said, you're really not out any money for paying six to eight.
I can't hear Todd, I'm sorry.
Revolver loans is not.
Todd, we were, we had multiple people talking, can you explain that again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I just couldn't hear you because we have multiple people talking. Can you just re-explain what you said?
Yeah, at the end of the day, you're not losing really any money, you're just delaying the payments and the interest accrual by six months, which on the revolver program is not going to cause any issue in terms of being able to issue new loans or funding problems.
Okay.
So I'll move that the Portage County Board of Commissioners authorizes NDS to defer payment and interest accrual on all loans they service for the county from three six, three twenty-six twenty through eight thirty-one twenty.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
We're under your regular resolutions now.
Yeah, I emailed the bill, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it. Um, the only thing really worth noting is on the journal vouchers, the first half tax settlement did come in. That's why that eight million dollars is such a large number. Um, so then the amount is eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, they were about short payment.
Oh, you know what, Todd, we don't have that.
You don't have that?
No. Amy, did?
The bill payment itself was one million thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. That, that is not unusually large.
Okay. Hey, Todd, can you just wait a minute till Amy prints it out so we can see it?
Sure, sure.
Thanks. Do you have it, Kathleen?
Oh, I think it gets it in the line, so. Put in other stuff. But no, I don't have it.
Okay, Amy. Thanks. Okay, Todd, you got it.
Okay, I will just catch on to it on the late fees of eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Those should be in with the zero, 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 one, eight twenty-nine, not in those solid weights. But everything else in there is correct. So the bill payment is one million thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-one thousand ten cents. Um, that's not an unusual amount to have in order, like, to have the ordinary amount in there. The late fees within that would be two dollars and thirty-one cents, the ACH is at twenty dollars. The journal vouchers of eight million four hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-one cents, that is a large amount, but that is our first half tax settlement, which is good news coming in. Um, so that's why that's such a large figure. And then the other amount is a little bit larger than what we normally have, but that would store a substantial large payment of over a hundred thousand each from the beginning of the year item. Um, so it's within two weeks.
Todd, when you say our tax settlement, does that have to do with the internet tax?
We still haven't seen anything related to that as a separate payment. I'm starting to suspect that it's being lumped into just the normal payment, but I know they said it was gonna be separate. Um, no, this is property tax.
Okay.
And Todd, we don't need to do a health benefit wire transfer resolution, correct?
No, not for that.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions before we start the resolution?
I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 26th, 2020 bills, ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 26th, 2020 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 26th, 2020, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. Uh, the Board of Commissioner, oh, does anyone have any questions on Todd's revised non-GAAP appropriations?
Todd, could you give us a brief explanation of your, your original last resolution?
Yeah, the two smaller amounts were, the auditor charges fees for the property tax collection. And those two budgets have not set up their fee, uh, payments, so they are currently over budget. We need to get that budget into those. The other one, excuse me, is the fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars of contractual services, and twenty-five thousand for materials and supplies. That is getting EMA set up for if they should have to ramp up expenses. Um, it's better for us to be ahead because it takes us time to react. Um, so that gives a little bit of cushion should, should orders start coming in.
Great. I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the non-GAAP 2020 Annual Appropriation Resolution, nineteen dash zero nine four eight, adopted December nineteenth, two thousand and nine.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
The Board of Commissioners approve the special meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and March nineteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Can I check on these? We've seen, I don't, I don't think we saw the nineteenth yet. Have we, Amy? They're done on my, my end. I know, like, we reviewed them, because I don't remember seeing that one. Now that I think about it, yeah.
I have to check with Julie.
Okay.
I don't think I've seen it yet.
Okay, so I'm gonna revise that motion. Board of Commissioners approve the special meeting minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Speaking.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. Do we have anyone covering our resources?
No, this is the payment that is in a series. No, this is the payment that is a series of regular payments and this is the final payment. So we let Water Resources know we didn't need to see that because they sent in for the other payments.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the journal entries that the Board of Commissioners signed the application and certificate for payment for the final payment of seven thousand seventy-nine dollars ninety-one cents for Schiller'sville Water Treatment Plant Chemical Improvements S H dash W nineteen dash zero six zero, payment to H L I Construction Company as presented by Water Resource Department. We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners acknowledges the journal entry receipt of the March twenty-third, twenty twenty certificate of the county auditor that the total appropriations from each fund do not exceed the official estimate resources for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty, as presented by the Portage County Auditor. We'll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
If you don't mind, can we recess for just a couple minutes, I'm gonna call Chris Bedary and then we'll come back and then I think we can adjourn.
Okay.
So it's recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Which would be nine thirty-seven.
Okay.